Bring the meeting to order. This is the fourth public session of the Board of Commissioners, February 48th, 2016. Prior to this meeting, we were in executive session to discuss a real estate matter and a legal matter. At this time, I will ask Mr. Gentili, please take a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarretty?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. O'Leary?
Here.
And Mr. Connell.
This evening Reverend Tim Johansson from the Temple Lutheran Church will lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Lord God, thank you for gathering us together. Thank you for giving us the gift of community where the whole can be greater than the sum of the parts when we work together. Lord, empower us to do so. Give us wisdom. Give us courage. Give us kindness that you alone can give. We pray especially today for people in the addictions community, for people who are still out there struggling. We pray for this heroin epidemic that is ravaging our township and our county. God, help us to help them. We also pray for all those who are sick, those who have recently lost loved ones. We now invite you to a moment of silence to remember those in your hearts. God, grant healing to all those who desperately need it and help us to be your healing presence for them. Bless the work that we do. May it all be to your glory. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first on the, well, second on the agenda tonight, proclamation for Congressman Pat Meehan. If Congressman Meehan is up at the podium, please?
About three years ago, residents of Naylor's, who live on Naylor's Run and Woodland Drive received flood insurance. They had to carry flood insurance because of a map amendment that FEMA had decided to inflict upon us. And what happened was now all these people who did not have, 63 residents, who did not have to carry flood insurance, were now having to pay about $3,000 a year, which you can imagine the prices of the homes dropped significantly and people couldn't sell their homes on the street and they couldn't make their bills now. So about three years ago, I started to receive a lot of phone calls and we went through the process. We contacted FEMA. They told us to get LOMAs, only to turn them down at significant cost to the residents. And so we reached out to all elected officials and Pat responded, was the only one who responded to us. He came down, he met with the residents, sat in their living rooms, toured the area, and then he put together with help from Lori, Lori Hanlon-Widup, our Director of Codes and Assistant Township Manager, Caitlin Daly, his Chief of Staff, worked together to put together a plan to help these people get out of this flood plain. He worked very hard, very hard. I haven't seen a politician work so hard to get these people, knowing usually we get from politicians, we get, yeah, we'll help you. Yeah, I am a politician, but from our senators, yeah, yeah, we get lip service, we'll help you out. And then who's gonna, who wants to fight FEMA? Well, this guy did. And he fought for us. He got the map amended and so now those 63 residents no longer have to pay for that. And so that is why he's here tonight, what a fantastic job he did. So I want to read this proclamation for him. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania wish to recognize Congressman Patrick Meehan for his efforts to aid residents of the Township of Haverford by challenging cost prohibitive flood insurance rates increases to homeowners and by working to correct a flood map amendment that falsely added certain properties along the channelized section of Naylor's Run to the flood risk area. And whereas affected property owners on Woodland Drive and Naylor's Run roads did seek the assistance of Congressman Meehan's office upon learning that recent changes to the flood risk map and flood insurance premiums were severely impacted, severely impacted the affordability and saleability of the affected homes. And whereas the congressman did personally meet with the property owners to tour Woodland Drive, the Woodland Drive properties and set out a plan for correction of the flood hazard
but most specifically the workers here and Caitlin and the other staffers.
map revisions and discuss needed flood insurance rate increase limitations. And whereas Congressman Meehan was instrumental in the successful modification of the flood
You know, all you had to do was walk and sit in that living room and look in the eyes
map to correct the flood risk designations of the homes that had been newly added to
of those homeowners and just feel viscerally the sense of frustration and deep concern
the flood hazard risk area, preserving the home's market values, properly adjusting
because not only was it what it was doing to upset the balance of the neighborhood, but
the levels of flood risk.
the real impact on the value of the homes and the economic consequences of what was
Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania does hereby offer its grateful appreciation to Congressman
the unintended consequences or the downstream consequences of these federal regulations.
Pat Meehan for his dedication and assistance to the residents of the Township of Haverford,
And so it was making the case. And the work that was done and Mary, the reason that we could continue to fight so
proclaim this eighth day of February 2016. Board President Chris Connell.
hard was there was nobody more relentless than you in continuing to work along with
Thank you so much.
Well, let me just take a moment to express my deep appreciation to the Commissioners, it. And again, I really do mean the work of all of the folks at the township level to make the case, to give us the information and the homeowners to change what goes on with using the Corps of Engineers and others. And I realize, and we worked on legislation in 2014, it was one of the things being guided by this experience. I was able to work with some other colleagues and you began to see that this was not an uncommon occurrence in other parts of the country. So there has been legislation designed to ameliorate some of the impacts. And lastly, I just say that I do appreciate that there's ongoing questions of mitigation and we're going to continue to work with the township who's looking for a grant currently to see if we can support the work that would enable some of the concerns as we see flow and others increase by getting support for that mitigation grant. We'll continue to fight for that and for the homeowners who continue to face issues. So I just want to express my deep appreciation of them just doing the job. And you really, it's nice every now and then to be able to do something where you think can make a difference, but it's just one part of a team. And this is where you really appreciate the value of staffers that just won't quit, looking along with elected officials that just won't quit. Thanks for all you did on this and I hope it makes a difference in the quality of life in Haverford for all of us here in Delaware County. Thank you. This really means a lot.
I did want to mention one other person who was involved and that was John DeSanto, who was relentless in his, he lives on Woodland Drive and he really just stayed on top of us and made sure that we did our jobs. So thank you, John. Yes, I mentioned Caitlin?
All right, next on the, where's my thing here?
Okay, we're going to open up the floor now. Oh, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Zlatnik with your audit report, please.
Hey, everyone. I've reviewed the disbursements for the period commencing January 12th and ending February 8th. I asked certain questions. I also asked for substantiation of certain of the disbursements. All of the answers were provided to my satisfaction and all the substantiation material was also furnished to my satisfaction. Therefore, in my opinion, for the period in question, there were no irregularities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zlatnik. Next on the agenda, we have Citizens Forum, 20 minutes registered speakers, 20 minutes for agenda items. This evening, four registered speakers, we have Dr. Michael Levin, who I saw, he is here.
Yeah, he's right there.
Mike Levin, 414 Mill Road. I'm going to have some other people with me tonight, but I first want to mention some things to you, first about snow removal, very briefly. I think of the 18 people who received tickets, we should consider the fact that there are people who cannot clear the snow from their properties. As a result, I'm calling on you Commissioners to do something about this, particularly in light of the fact that youth these days no longer has the opportunity to shovel snow upon request. I think that there should be something set up that allows people who are unable to move the snow for one reason or another to be able to call into the township and receive some consideration, either from Public Works, from Recreation, or from the Senior Citizens Committee. I have one concern about Harvard 7 from the time that I first learned of it, particularly in 2015. I would have this before you in a document, but I was unable today to bring up my Internet mail server, not because of my problem, but because of a systemic problem. But I do want to tell you that I've given some serious thought to that and attended the meeting with DEP in Norristown where I was an observer and told them that I was interested in learning whether this was an acceptable project of Act Two to all of the individuals involved, including DEP. It almost knocked my socks off to learn that this site, that is the McCandless Fuel Site and the Open Road Site, had been subdivided into seven lots, which were each individually going to receive an Act Two. That is unbelievable, meaning that there's going to be a good deal of contamination left in place. I asked certain questions following that to Mr. Servideo and he referred it to Stephen Cindy, who is the Unrined Metal Manager. We had a lively correspondence in which I found out that he made a statement which was basically, yes, certainly the inspections we've made to confirm the decision, that is to consider these as separate Act Twos, points in the, that in the document lead us to fully understand, and these are his words, not mine, the submission. I maintained thereafter that he did not have enough information to, DEP did not have enough information to learn the whole submission and that the answer which he gave was exceptionally Parties to this action live in two places. They live waiting, awaiting to go into new properties which have wilted over the contamination and I have viewed the type of labor barrier we need as well as the statements from the responsible engineering firm, which said, just put a labor barrier down, which is what they did, but they did not protect the rest of the excavation. So it's my opinion that what this is going to lead to is a potential problem which has not been solved. I asked a number of questions. I've given you the questions in this, there are 16, probably three additional there, and Mr. Cindy, their Unrined Metal Manager, would answer none of them. He said, that's not what my responsibility was. My responsibility was Act Two itself, nothing else. I understand your concern, Mike, but I'm not going there. I've given you the questions that I asked him to answer and his response. Only three of them could conceivably been answered. My concern now is for the security of the people who are both living in the vicinity and about to move into at least six homes. I believe for health security purposes, you should take seriously as a government which offers one thing of consequence to citizens of this township, as all governments do, health and security. For health and security purposes, it is advisable that the new residences on Harvard 7 receive air and water quality studies on a regular basis, one. Second, that there should be air and water quality testing. I believe in addition that the neighboring residences, which show up only in the transmittal letter of this report from the lawyers, should receive consideration for testing as well because it is indicated basically in the report that there are established properties there which have had incidents. I think this is a serious concern.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. That's six minutes we gave you, both the time here for your register and also the time for the Citizens Forum.
Thank you very much. I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have, but I'm seriously very concerned about this Act Two on Harvard 7, primarily because it is so unusual. It does not remove all of the contamination and you had 15 years from the point that the Superfund site was taken care of.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. Thank you very much. So what we're going to do is I'm going to take this, these two pages.
I'd like to finish my sentence.
Dr. Levin, we have been through this.
I'd like to finish my sentence, please. It's been 15 years.
Put a period there somewhere.
Since that time when you could have taken another Superfund project on that site. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go for 20 minutes for agenda items. Anything on the agenda? Anybody on this side of the room? Can you come up, your name and address, please?
Good evening. I'm Don Kelly at 135 East Hathaway Lane in Haverford. I'd like to address item number 15, Resolution 2003 through 2016, proposal to discontinue further work sessions. I think we all feel in the community here that this community has made great strides in recent years in terms of how efficiently the Board of Commissioners functions, the openness to the public, transparency under the administrations of both Mr. Wexler and Mr. O'Leary. I think we've really moved forward quite a lot. And it was recently recognized in a large article in the Philadelphia Inquirer about Haverford Township transforming, not only about the business districts, but also the political climate. And I think part of that progress moving forward has been the work sessions. People have been able to observe the discussions. Sometimes the public would be invited to make presentations that would help further inform the Commissioners. As a result, I think the Commissioners' meetings have been more efficient and productive. So I think this would be a step backward. I hope that we would continue the good, the good work and structure of these deliberations that have been in the past administrations of Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Wexler, and I would hope they would continue in the future. Thank you.
I'm Richard Kerr, 18 Meadows Lane in Haverford. I'm here representing myself as well as the Friends of Haverford Trails. I want to talk about two ordinances on the agenda tonight. The first is Ordinance P3 2016 about the granting of an easement on private property to the township for the purposes of a trail. The Friends of Haverford Trails supports township passage of this ordinance, the legal establishment of the easement that it permits, and the creation of the trail portion on the land involved. The Friends also publicly acknowledge and thank Grace Cook for her public spirited offer of the easement and for her stewardship of the Willerstreams property. The second easement, or motion, ordinance I would like to speak to is Ordinance, excuse me, P4 2016, having to do with the establishment of a public right-of-way on Parkview Drive. Parkview Drive is a township road, partly a residential street and partly a road through our largest and most active open space and park complex. The Friends offer two comments on it. One, we request that Haverford Township establish and post signage for a speed limit on Parkview Drive not to exceed 25 miles an hour, and if at all possible, lower. Presently, there are no compliance speed limit signs posted on this road, only non-compliance signs for 15 miles an hour, and those apparently only apply to construction traffic. Number two, the Friends request that Haverford Township post no trucks, local delivery only signs at both ends of Parkview Drive to reduce so-called cut-through traffic that rightly belongs on Darby Road and Marple Road, which are state-owned arterials that better and more safely handle this traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Anybody on this side of the room, on second row here? Third row? Fourth row? There being no more questions? All right. Take it off. Dr. Levin, these two pages that you handed in, we will get together with the township engineer, the township solicitor, and the township manager and go over your list here. As far as the snow removal goes, Mr. Gentili?
I just want to clear up, I think it's a misunderstanding. Those 18 citations were not for residents who didn't clear their sidewalks. Therefore, they were for individuals, contractors, and/or residents who placed snow back into the street. We have an ordinance, it is extremely unlawful and unsafe for anyone to shovel, plow, or put snow back into the street after the township crews have cleared the roadway. So that's the citations that were issued, not for residents who didn't clear their sidewalk. That ordinance is strictly enforced and we have a zero tolerance. It's unsafe. Their people, residents, or contractors, whoever was sighted, is basically creating an unsafe condition. So that's what those citations were for.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, excuse me, Hathaway Lane, I'm sorry, work session, as far as that goes. Yes, that is up tonight for discussion and I guess it will play out as the other two, as both sides of the boards will talk about it. Thank you. And Mr. Kerr, the signs that would, let's see, that is Mr. Siegel's area and that would require petitions or what have you.
We'll talk to the police.
We'll refer to Commissioner Siegel for those.
Are you saying just trucks or you're saying no cut-through traffic, like no through traffic?
Those signs aren't enforceable.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure.
Trucks belong on arterials.
And then the dedicated speed limit for that. Okay. All right. I think we can move on then. Approval of the minutes, number five, Mr. D'Amelio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 11th, 2016.
Second.
First, a second at discussion?
Mr. President, I have just a couple corrections, which I won't bore the board with, I'll just give those to Larry Gentili, just some word changes and so, subject to those corrections, I would be supportive.
I think then we can't, we're going to approve them after we have these? I think we actually have to, don't we have to read?
Do I read them?
These into it in order to approve it?
I think we do. I think we need to hear what the changes are before we approve it. Right, solicitor?
I'll bore you all with this then.
Bottom of page, three. Bottom of page one, it should be, that last sentence there, it should be four instead of two, four obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. And then on page two, last sentence there, just tense, should be was, who was absent, referring to Mr. Holmes. And then page 11, last sentence here as well, I personally thank Chief Carbon Petten. That's not a complete sentence there. It should be for doing a fantastic job. So there are the three corrections.
I accept those corrections.
Okay.
The person stated in a complete sentence.
That's right. I think they probably did.
All right, with those corrections in mind, Mr. Gentili, if you'd take the roll, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
As I was not there, I will abstain.
First to second at discussion.
Mr. President, I have just a couple corrections, which I won't bore the board with. I'll just give those to Larry Gentili, just some word changes. So, subject to those corrections, I would be supportive.
Then we can't, we're going to approve them after we have these? I think we actually have to, don't we have to read?
Do I read them?
These into it in order to approve it?
I think we do. I think we need to hear what the changes are before we approve it. Right, solicitor?
I'll bore you all with this then. Bottom of page, three. Bottom of page one. It should be, that last sentence there, it should be four instead of two. Four obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. And then on page two, last sentence there, just tense, it should be was, who was absent, referring to Mr. Holmes. And then page 11, last sentence here as well. He personally thanked Chief Carbon Petten. That's not a complete sentence there. It should be for doing a fantastic job. So there are the three corrections.
I accept those corrections.
Okay.
The person stated in a complete sentence.
That's right. I think they probably did.
All right, with those corrections in mind, Mr. Gentili, if you'd take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
As I was not there, I will abstain.
Mr. McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Mr. Who?
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes, thank you. O'Connell, that's my cousin. Number six, approval of the warrants. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number two of 2016 totaling $3,199,547.11, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for January 14, 2016, in the amount of $1,017,325.20. The general and sewer fund payroll for January 28, 2016, in the amount of $615,255.99. General fund disbursements, number two of 2016, in the amount of $1,247,236.6. Sewer fund disbursements, number two of 2016, in the amount of $41,312.67. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number two of 2016, in the amount of $37,455.58. Home grant fund, number two of 2016, in the amount of $2,030. Capital Fund Project Fund Disbursement, number two of 2016, in the amount of $233,982.5. And a credit card statement ending January 27 of 2016, in the amount of $4,949.56.
Second.
Mr. President, our township auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that he raised were answered adequately and to his satisfaction by our finance director. And it is my recommendation that we approve these warrants.
Any further discussion? There being none, take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number seven, ordinance number P2-2016. This is a second reading.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P2016 authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Kenmore Road, north side, thirty feet west of Arlington Road. Establish sticker parking only on Buck Lane, north side, from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road. Rescind parking prohibited during certain hours on Buck Lane, north side, 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road. Establish parking prohibited during certain hours on Buck Lane, south side, from Railroad Avenue to Pamir Road, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Valid residential permit exempt. And finally, establish special purpose parking in front of 3 West Mercer Avenue.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. Discussion? Take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number eight, ordinance P3-2016, also a second reading right away.
Mr. President? Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P3-2016 by creating a public right-of-way at Parkview Drive, Haverford, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarret. Discussion? Take the role. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number nine, ordinance P4-2016, second reading. Mr. Siegel, do you wish to take that one, too?
Sure. Mr. President, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P4-2016 authorizing the township to enter into an easement agreement for portions of the property located at 3824 Darby Road for the establishment of trail facilities.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Discussion? Take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number 10, ordinance number P5-2016. This is a first reading.
Mr. Siegel? Sure. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P5-2016 authorizing the acquisition of property at 900 North Eagle Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania, subject to review and acceptance by the township solicitor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler.
Where's the 900 Eagle Road? Where's that located?
That's the piece of property adjacent to the Superfund site, adjacent to the treatment facility.
It's in the fourth ward, right, Dan?
It's in the fourth ward.
And why are we doing this again?
This is a property where the treatment, Laurie can explain it also, but it's where the treatment plant is. That would give us title to the land with no obligation, no legal obligations whatsoever. They would remain with both DEP and EPA. But in the event, or when, if in any of our lifetimes or our children's, the land is turned back over to the township as clean, then it would revert to the township to have ownership of the property. It also includes a small strip of land, sort of on the driveway, that leads into the area where they have the car repair and body shops and those facilities there. But we would have no legal liability. I don't know if that's fully accurate, or?
Pretty full. Yep. This is what I?
Yes.
I think we also want to mention the other portion is the rear of 404, I think it's 404-5 Rittenhouse, which is in the ordinance as well. And there are legal descriptions of both in my file, if you're interested.
Questions?
I just, I've had concerns about this property with the storage site all along. I just can't believe that building was built there. I think it's, I know it looks terrible now. I did see some renderings of it changing, and I'm praying that that's exactly what it looks like. But I still have concerns about that, so.
Any further? Take the role, please.
This is a separate property from that.
I get it.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Close to it, though.
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number 11, Resolution 1999-2016.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution number 1999-2016 pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501 of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code. As amended, do hereby declare the existence of a snow emergency in the township of Haverford County of Delaware, and further, we direct the township of Haverford Emergency Management Coordinator to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate aid and action needed to alleviate the effects of the snow emergency to the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency action deemed necessary to respond to this emergency. And still further, we authorize officials of the township of Haverford to act as necessary to meet the current exigencies of this emergency, namely by rental of equipment, purchase of supplies and materials, and by entering into such contracts and agreements for the performance of public work as may be required to meet the emergency, all without regard to those time-consuming procedures and formalities normally prescribed by law, mandatory constitutional requirements accepted.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Discussion?
Is this for tomorrow's snow, or?
No, this covers.
I know, messing around.
Take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution number 202016 approving the preliminary slash final minor subdivision plan for Spazado Homes, the applicant, for the property located at 1224 Steel Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio number 22-09-02290-00, has been submitted to permit the subdivision of the existing 41,475-square-foot lot into three lots, each containing 13,825 square feet. The subject property is Zoned R4, Low-Medium Residential, and is located in the ninth ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by Catania Engineering Associates, Millmont Park, Pennsylvania, dated December 4, 2015, subject to compliance with the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Discussion? Take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number 13, Resolution number 2001-2016, minor subdivision. Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution number 2001 of 2016 approving the preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Rayor Builders LLC for the properties located at 2517 Brynmar Avenue and 2525 Brynmar Avenue, Haverford Township, Delaware County, known as DC Folio numbers 22-06-00457-00 and 22-06-00458-00, have been submitted to permit the consolidation of two existing parcels and subdivided into three lots. Lots numbers one and two will contain 6,8675 square feet. Lot three will contain 8,215 square feet. Subject property is Zoned R4, Low-Medium Residential, and is located in the sixth ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by H. Gilroy Damon Associates, Inc. of Sharon Hill, Pennsylvania, dated October 8, 2015, subject to compliance with the numerous recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler. Discussion?
Mr. President, I just wanted to indicate I had, this is obviously in the sixth ward. I spoke with one constituent who attended a number of the meetings associated with the subdivision plan at the zoning and at the Planning Commission level. I am satisfied that the township engineer and the requirements of the Planning Commission and the requirements of our code satisfies that constituent and all the neighbors' concerns about any time we subdivide and provide for new construction. And I recommend that this resolution be passed.
Recommend noted. Discussion? There being none, take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler? Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number 14, Resolution number 2002-2016, land development.
Mr. President, motion to adopt Resolution number 2002-2016 approving the preliminary final land development for DN Group LLC for property located at 109 and 115 West Eagle Road, Haverford Township, Delaware County, and known as DC Folio numbers 22-03-00947-00 and 22-03-00948-00, has been submitted to permit the consolidation of the two lots and develop the combined .530 acre lot with a two-story, approximately 4,394-square-foot building together with 37 parking spaces. The subject property is Zoned C3, General Commercial District, and is located in the third ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by Mammoni and Associates, Inc., Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors, Brynmar, Pennsylvania, dated October 29, 2015, and last revised on January 20, 2016, subject to compliance with the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Discussion?
Yeah, Laurie, can you just explain maybe a little bit more and where this property is and what it is? Just because a lot of these, the votes on this property took place before I was on the board.
Sure. The property is located on Eagle Road near the 7-Eleven store. It's included in that strip of areas that we had looked at for business district overlay. This particular lot is outside of that area. The property owners are working with the design requirements for the streetscape improvements for the district, but they're not making any of those communal parking areas. They are, in fact, setting the proposed building back for the consistency of the setbacks. And the two sites, the two buildings, the one had been a funeral home at one time, and after that, there was a moving storage box. You could get boxes for moving. And the other was residential use. There is a lot to the rear as well, which is Zoned Residential. It's not part of the subdivision. And I do have a copy of the plan from the file, if anybody's interested.
It's the corner of Eagle and Oakmont, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
And will this be the last time that we're voting on this property?
It'll be the last time you're voting on it, yes, unless somebody proposes a use that's conditional.
Any further? Thank you. Take the role, please. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
No.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarret?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Connell. Yes. Item number 15, Resolution number 2003-2016, Discontinuance of Work Session.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, although I intend to vote no on this, I will advance the motion to adopt Resolution number 2003-2016 rescinding all further work sessions of the Board of Commissioners. Work sessions will be scheduled intermittently if need arises.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva.
Mr. Chairman, when this discussion took place, my feeling was that we maintained the work sessions, but only hold them if the president deemed necessary, or if there was an extenuating circumstance which we needed to have a work session. So I don't know if we could change it. Would you, if I changed it to that, would you accept it?
Well, I agree with that. I think we leave the work sessions as scheduled as we passed, I think, an ordinance to do that. Or was it a, was it an ordinance, was it a?
I think we passed the resolution.
Resolution to that effect. But I think that's a good compromise, that we keep them as scheduled and then leave it to the discretion of the president of the board and the township manager as to whether the work session is needed. And if it's not needed, then it would be canceled. And if it's needed, then we proceed with the work session. So I think that's a good, I think that's a good compromise.
I agree with that, because I think there's times where there is just housekeeping issues, things like that, and there's no need for one, then we shouldn't have one because we're wasting time and money. But if, you know, we would keep them regularly scheduled, this would allow us to remove them if there was no need for one.
Right. And we wouldn't have to call a special meeting because we already have a meeting scheduled that we could just say on that date, we'll hold the meeting.
Mr. President, I do not agree with that kind of discretion in the hands of you and the township manager. A critical mass of this board, whether it's four members of this board, five members of this board, should decide whether or not we're going to cancel the work session. You know, while you guys set the agenda, you don't necessarily know the issues You know, while you guys set the agenda, you don't necessarily know the issues that each of the commissioners are dealing with, with ward-specific ordinances. We have scheduled work sessions. If we decide as a board at the February meeting that we don't need a work session in March, we could discuss it, or it could be put out to the crowd, but I don't agree that simply announcing the week before a work session that the president and the township manager have decided we don't need one is, should be the grounds by which we cancel the work sessions. I'm not in favor of discontinuing, but I've gone along with every time we've decided not to hold a work session. We have canceled them in the past. We regularly don't conduct them at election time. We don't have one in January. If we don't think we have any reason to have one, we've canceled them in August before because of slow summer months, and we've canceled them, you know, a month in advance. But there'd have to be better, we'd have to lay out more, more structure to the decision behind canceling the work session. So, I mean, the motion before the board right now is to discontinue work sessions, so either...
I changed it.
Well, you didn't change it, we didn't, what did you change it to?
I asked him if he would accept it, and he said yes.
But what is that motion now? What is that motion now called?
It's a vote, upper noun, whether we should have work sessions, so.
We're in discussion right now, so the motion to change hasn't been accepted yet by who seconded it.
Okay.
So, we're in discussion right now.
Right.
Mr. Aliva, second the motion, so in order for you to make the changes, it would go to Mr. Lewis, and then it... Mr. Aliva.
Right.
But what are those changes, in detail?
Well, the way I tried to, you know, I never said we sending them, I said maintaining them.
You want to go back? You actually want to play last week's meeting again?
I said maintaining them on schedule.
You want to call it up, Mr. Siegel, on your website, where you said we shouldn't have work sessions?
Mr. D'Amelio, you have the floor.
I'm just, you know, is he finished? Because if he is...
No, I'm not even close to finish, but go ahead, Mr. D'Amelio.
Well, then, you know, this is why, this is why we have these issues.
This is why.
This is why.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I was saying was, what I'd like to see is that we maintain them on the schedule and only have them as the president deems necessary. If he feels that we need to have a work session, we have it scheduled, it's there. As Commissioner Aliva has stated, a lot of these issues are routine, just maintaining township issues, and they're quickly decided, and we have the solicitor coming, we have the chief coming, we have other township employees here. If there's a huge issue we haven't scheduled, the president or any of us, even at this meeting, could say, we can ask for the work session to discuss this, even one topic, rather than call a special meeting.
It's the equivalent of calling a special meeting, because your version is that we don't have these unless he says we need them.
Exactly.
Right, and I disagree one hundred percent with that.
Well, that's...
We have them unless the determination is made, and the determination is made under some set of parameters that we don't need it.
Yeah.
Because that's what we've had. We've had it for eight years, and we have a resolution passed where we're...
What would you suggest is a mechanism? I don't know how that would work, Larry.
I'm sorry.
It's very simple. I think the township president, I think the president can circulate to the board that he's considering taking down next month's work session, and here's what the, here's what the agenda is, and commissioners are going to say whether it's a good idea or not.
Okay, Mr. Aliva?
All I want to say is, I agree with Larry. Part of that, I think, is what Steve was saying, that we would keep the scheduled work session and then cancel them based on whatever criteria that is, whatever we decide. Am I correct in saying that this, they would be scheduled as normal, and then only if it was deemed, and I don't know what mechanism that is that we will use to deem that.
And how you vote on something like that.
Wow.
Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, well, first, I don't agree with the amendment, and I don't think the amendment is consistent with the township charter. Township charter only provides a limited role for the president, which is to run these meetings, to serve as our representative, and carries out such other duties as prescribed elsewhere in the charter, the administrative code, or other ordinance. The meetings are set out by resolution which is different from ordinance. That's first. Second, what we have consistently done is exactly what's been discussed here. We see this month what, we know, we often know what's coming up in the next month, and we determine we're going to have a work session next month or not. It is a board decision, and I think that is the way we should continue to do so. We've canceled other work sessions. Sometimes we think there's an issue, and we're here for ten minutes. Well, there is a price of democracy. There is a price of open government, and if that price is the small cost that it costs to have the chief and the solicitor and to have these meetings available to the public, then that is a cost of democracy that this township should be bearing. We spend a lot of money on a lot of areas. We've disagreed on a lot of them on this board. But the one thing, and the one area where this board has consistently been, I think, out front, and it's been said over the, with President Aliva, President Wexler, is that we have really broad openness and transparency, and part of that is our discussions at the work session. Last week was an ideal example of that, where we discussed at length the issue of truck parking, and then determined that it was not ready for a meeting, which alleviated the potential for a lot of public comment where we would have then made that determination. So, to me, the work sessions not only move us forward, they're the price we should be paying for transparency, openness, and to allow the public to see our thinking. We cannot meet elsewhere other than an executive session, so they are a valuable tool, and I think we leave the mechanism exactly the way it has run, and it has run well. Thank you.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Well, I think, I think his characterization of democracy is wrong. We're not ending democracy here. I'll stay here till three o'clock in the morning if you had to. I mean, we could discuss, we have discussed issues, that we have discussed on the work session at length. We've discussed them at length again in sessions like this, same, almost verbatim, the same discussions. So, to say that we're ending democracy or stopping democracy...
Not what I said.
Is wrong. What I'm saying is, and I'll say it again, we have them scheduled. If we need to schedule it, if you want to, whatever criteria you want to use, if you want to have five votes and say on a Monday night, regular meeting tonight, that we want to have a work session next week, if we say no, it's no. If it's yes, it's yes, fine. I'm okay with that.
I just, I don't normally get into responding to certain comments. I never said what you quoted me. I said there is a price of democracy, and there is a price...
You're implying it.
No, I am not.
Well, in my opinion, you are.
Well, I...
Actually, he's not implying it, you're inferring it.
There's another question on the floor, so...
I'm inferring it, okay, whatever.
Mr. Wexler will be next.
But the reality is, there is a price we pay for openness, and I'm not willing to sacrifice that. This board has been open. There were years, I remember when I was a...
But we're not going to be closed. You're saying we're not going to be open.
May I finish? And you can be frustrated, we all are at times, but that's, that's why we have a debate. This board had, years ago, when I first became active in this township, things happened behind closed doors. We're not there, and I don't think we're going there, but the work sessions allow us to facilitate discussions. We use them in many different ways during the discussions for the property. We had essentially work sessions, open meetings, special meetings, and we allowed the public in to see our thinking. I think that's important, and I don't want to give that up at all.
Okay.
Can I suggest, can I suggest that, that the president of the board, in consultation with Larry Gentile, each month look at the agenda, and if they make a determination collectively that they think that it's in the best interest to not have a work session, to circulate to this board, and if five say yes, or five say no, then that's what happens.
I'm fine with that. I'm absolutely fine with that.
That gets you, your full, everybody gets to weigh in on it, and...
I'm fine with that.
Based on their recommendation, and we, and that, we don't need one, need one, we don't have one, and if we need one, we'll, you know, we'll have five votes.
Is this sunshine law concerned about that?
Let me hold just one second, please. Mr. Wexler, you tried a couple times to get in here.
Yeah, I'll give you my two cents, since we started this under, when I was president of board. I look at the work session as an opportunity, that's when we, we get to talk to each other. We don't get that talk to each other here at the formal meeting. It's a chance for open discussion. It's also the chance for the staff to make their presentations to us. You asked a question tonight about nine-hundred Eagle Road. We went through that for about ten minutes last week, so we all were pretty much familiar with it. I don't know if you weren't here or not last week, but we all knew what the property was, we all knew what, what the issue was and why it was right to do that. It's also the time we've scheduled committee updates, so any of the commissioner committee updates. It's also the meeting that the police chief gives his monthly update for the police department. And tonight is the formal meeting, where we're obligated to hear the citizens' input before we actually vote. It's really not the appropriate time to drag it on for the public that wants to sit here and make their comments, and we get our last chance to hear them after our discussion the week prior, and then we make our decisions with the final night based upon the citizens' input and their plea for, and to sway us in how we look at it. So, I think, I believe that the work session is great for the staff updates. Lori can give opportunities to do that. It's where the presentations come from, the architects, the sewer department, everything that has to go on, instead of saddling us at the public meeting for an extra burden and continue that into a long evening. It's also the night that we've also been able to schedule the public hearings for zoning issues and other issues that we've had to do, so obligated another, there'd be a third night if we had a session there, so. So, I think it's, over the last eight years, it's served a great purpose for the township. That's my...
I don't disagree with Bill, and I would just, if I could just add, we're not asking, or I am not saying that we shouldn't be doing committee updates and those sort of things, but it depends on what updates there are. So, you know, Larry said it before, we have canceled them in the past, so, and democracy hasn't changed in the township. It has not. We are just as open as we always were. All I am trying to say, or all, is that there are times that we don't need to have the work session. There are months, and then we end up coming here, I end up coming to this board, nobody shows up in the audience, nobody watches it on TV, there's no issues, and we just sit here and, and go through the motions for ten minutes, and then we walk out of here. I think that that's a waste of time for our staff. I think it's a waste of time, and those meetings should be canceled. But let's not have them show up here and, and waste the public's time, waste our own time, and waste our resources when there's no need to.
How frustrated is the public when they try to speak and they can't at those meetings?
Mr. President?
Mr. McCloskey, he wants to get in his first, his first time through.
Mr. President, thank you. Just briefly, if, if the process already exists whereby this board does not have work sessions, I don't see the need for any resolution. If you don't want a work session in a particular month, just follow the same one you did to cancel it last October. At the end of the day, a resolution calling for the rescinding or limiting of work sessions is basically two things. If, one, eliminates a day of work for this board, and, two, it creates a less open atmosphere to the public. And no vote we should take should be less open and less transparent. If you want to cancel the work session, follow the same thing you did to cancel it last October, and I don't see the need for this resolution, and I would not vote for a resolution that makes our discussions and our votes less open and transparent.
As of this time, we have six commissioners who so far have voiced a concern not, not to go with what is here before us, and then to change it. So, it appears at this time, what is in front of us, this, to discontinue the work session, so far I count six commissioners who are not for that.
Well, no, I'm not...
So, that's what I'm saying. So, my question here is then, are we going to end up changing something here?
Can I, can I ask a question, Mr. President? I'd like to ask our solicitor his opinion on this, whether...
Because we've changed...
Can we, can the president and the township manager recommend to this board and survey this board as to their opinion as to whether a work, if they recommend, for example, a work session be...
You'd have to be careful on the sunshine law, on surveying the board as to whether or not, you know, like taking a vote outside of, outside of a public meeting.
Exactly.
On the other hand, if you look at the, if you look at the charter, the charter says that the, and the charter only speaks to the one monthly meeting that we have, because charter was written back before we started doing work sessions, which we established by resolution. And the charter says that a, the manager, along with approval of the board, can make up the agenda. If the manager is making up the agenda, and there's nothing on the agenda to vote for, and then we don't get a quorum, then we won't have a meeting. So, if people call the manager without voting and say, Larry, there's nothing on the agenda tonight, I don't think I'm going to come, and you get five people to do that, then I think we probably accomplish the same thing that we're trying to accomplish here, because then the five, at least five, the other four can't meet, or can't take, take any kind of action. So, it would be a matter of keeping your eye on the agenda. If there's nothing on there that, that needs comment, you know, calling into the manager who's in charge of the agenda, saying, I don't think I'm going to be there at this meeting, and that would...
I don't, I don't do this much, Mr. Solicitor. I never do this publicly. I don't agree with that, suggesting to us there's a way to get around the sunshine law of us acting as a board. We can't debate by email. The public may not know this, but we can't talk to one another. Nine commissioners put out an email and say, hey, next week, what do you guys think about P five of two thousand and six? And four of us say we're for it, and five of us say we're against it, and we decide not to put it on the agenda. It is against the law for any five of us or more of us to ever get, sit down together and talk outside of the public at a, at a, at a published meeting. So, it's only two times a month, there's only two times a month that you could see us debate, and that is at the work session and at the, and at this session. And at the work session, part of why we created the work sessions was to have a session at which we've, we made it clear at the outset, we would not act at that meeting. We were not empowered to pass our, you know, to enact ordinances or pass our resolutions or spend money or do anything. It was to, it was to speak with one another about whatever our issues were about that month's agenda, and take advantage of the opportunity to do public hearings, to hear from our police, to hear from whatever, from, from whatever committees or organizations in town want to present to us. We had presentations from the Bryn Mawr College students who did that excellent work. That was at a work session. So, this talk, there's been probably a hundred work sessions in, no, there's probably been eighty work sessions in the eight years we've been doing these, these work sessions. I, I'm still trying to remember what one lasted ten minutes. I remember an awful lot of them that lasted sixty to ninety minutes, where we had a lot of presentation and a lot of debate, and then a week later, we had a regular meeting. So, Mr. Siegel has every one of our meetings posted on his website, and we can go back, and if somebody can show me three meetings where we've met for less than a half an hour, then I will admit I'm wrong about how much we accomplish at these meetings. I won't change my vote, but you can at least let me know that I'm wrong. So, I don't know what these ten-minute meetings are, and ironically, last week was a perfect example of what we do at work sessions, where we debated the idea of whether we should have work sessions. And because of that, and it ended up on the agenda, Don Kelly and others came to this meeting specifically to see what we were going to do about work sessions, and at our official meeting when we're supposed to act. That's the value these things bring to us.
We've had thirty-five sessions since December of two thousand and twelve. Thirty-five sessions since December of two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
So, I think we, you...
And we didn't start them in twelve.
No, we started them right around when I came on the board. Mr. Wexler was president. But I'm just looking at what's in my records here. Mr. Burns?
If I could just respond briefly, and I don't make it a habit of arguing with my clients either, it doesn't, it doesn't go very well, but, but I think that, I think that maybe Commissioner Holmes was not quite understanding what I was saying. I'm not talking about having a...
I have a habit of telling your clients they're not as smart as you.
Only once at all.
That's...
Yeah. Now, what I was trying to say was, there are certainly times at all meetings when people realize for one reason or another that there shouldn't be a meeting, or there's not going to be a meeting tonight. Like, take it, if this meeting were scheduled for tomorrow night, and there was four or five inches of snow outside, and four out of, or five out of the nine, commissioners called in and said, I can't make it because it's going to snow. Well, then it quite simply wouldn't make any sense for the other four to set up, set up, show up here and just look at each other. So, by the same token, if Mr., if Mr. Gentile is sitting there putting together the agenda, and there's really nothing on there, that makes a whole lot of sense for everybody to come out, and five of the nine people say, well, I'm not coming out there for something that doesn't make any sense, then I think maybe the meeting, you know, just gets canceled because you don't have a quorum, and you're really getting to the same result that you started for here. If you do it by resolution, you're going to have a hard time, because you don't know now whether you're going to have something on the agenda in August. This is going to be something that happens each month, and...
Can I ask you, if this board decided to amend this resolution to give the discretion to the township manager and president of the board to decide whether we have a work session or not have a work session, is that, can we make that amendment?
I think, I think he already has it, and I don't even know that you need to do that, because I think if you, I think if you do that, and then it starts to become a voting issue, then I think we get into what Mr. Holmes was talking about, is, you know, well, these two issues are important to me, but not important to you, and, you know, I'm calling Mr. D'Amelio and saying, you show up with me, and you don't show up with me. But I think if each individual commissioner takes a look after Mr. Gentile makes the agenda and says, I'm not coming to this tonight because there's nothing on here that's worth talking about, and then if Mr. Gentile gets five calls, then he can post on the, on the TV that we don't have a quorum tonight, and therefore we're not going to have a meeting.
I, I'm very concerned about that point, because, again, I don't know when we don't I, I'm very concerned about that point, because, again, I don't know when we don't have things on the agenda. We found out last week with all the issues raised about parking, that simply truck parking on Ridgeway is, might not matter to seven commissioners, but to, to one or two of those commissioners and to their constituents, it's a huge deal. You know, every month, we have developments in different, you know, in different wards, and to the neighbors and the people in that ward, that really matters. So the invitation to our board members to take a look at the agenda, to decide whether or not this is a meeting they feel like showing up at, I, I think is a, is a really bad practice for us to set, and is a really bad one to be saying out loud in front of the camera. We have started work sessions without a quorum, because we don't need a quorum to conduct the work session, because we don't take official action at the work session. We listen to presentations from different people, and we debate and discuss whatever issues we have here. And there's been plenty of times where the fifth person didn't filter in, or the fifth and sixth and seventh person didn't filter in until the meeting was well underway.
Plenty of times?
What's that?
You say plenty of times?
A number of times, sure. I mean, I, I can think of a number of instances where we started off with four people. And again, I'll go back to the tapes to confirm that. And, you know, we, the people can come to those meetings, people don't come to those meetings. It's actually, it's not that frequent that we have all nine at a work session. I mean, you'd agree with me on that, Mr. President, wouldn't you?
Usually we, usually we have more meetings where you have nine here.
Yeah, I mean, we have almost perfect attendance at these meetings for every meeting of the year. And so it's a rare thing for one of us commissioners to miss one of our, one of our voting sessions. But is it a rare thing for any one of us to miss one or more work sessions? No, I think that's the, of the two sessions, if people can't make it, they don't make it.
If anybody is going to not make a meeting, it's going to be the work session.
Right, and we don't move, nobody calls and says, cancel this week's work session because I now have to be out of town, or I have to travel somewhere, whereas we all work our travel schedules and do everything around our, around the, this meeting, the second meeting of the month, because this is where we need to, we need to take our official action. But a lot gets accomplished at those work sessions, and I think it's a major step backwards. And, and we have, we have canceled work sessions in the past by talking about them in advance. We've talked about them in the meeting before and said, we don't see any reason to have, in July, we've said, do we need an August work session? And we've talked about it, and we've asked, what do we expect to be on the agenda? And there's nothing that any one of us or the staff tells us in public on this camera what's going on, and that we say, then let's not have the work session in August.
We do the same thing.
Anything that happens, but anything that happens in between is a problem, because it's not in the public. So if you want to talk at the meeting and plan it, which is how we've done it before, I have no problem with that. I do have a major problem, I have a sunshine law problem, and I have just the public's perception of how we do things problem, if we talk behind, outside of the public's ears and eyes about whether or not to conduct a meeting. And that's not properly the subject of an executive session. I mean, we have the, we know what the specific subjects of executive sessions are, and they're detailed by law, and we have executive sessions, but it's not a subject of executive session of us to discuss whether or not to have a meeting, so it should happen in front of the public. But it could happen at the meeting before the next meeting, or two meetings before the next meeting, just as long as the public hears about it.
Okay, so before us right now, the way this is written, I have down here, the majority of the people of the board are saying that they do not agree with the way it's written. However, Mr. DiMillo has expressed a change, and that change was accepted by both Mr. Lewis and Mr. Oliva. And that change was to retain the work session, as opposed to rescinding all work sessions at the, at the Board of Commissioners. Work sessions will be scheduled intermittently if need arises. So how do, so at this point, what I'm asking is, how, how is it that we would take the vote on this?
Well, I think, I think the solicitor.
There's a motion right now that's pending. The motion is.
I want to get a clar.
It changes this, it changes this completely.
Based on our ability to cancel that at a prior meeting, I make a motion that we table this resolution.
Second. Okay, and there's, now I, I'm going to Mr. Lewis to see if.
There's a motion to table.
Yeah.
A motion to table.
Okay. Take the roll.
Mr. DiMillo? No, because I think it needs further discussion tonight.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrett?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
All right, so.
So let me just ask the solicitor a question.
Further discuss it.
Can I just articulate the motion as I understand it, tell me whether I have it wrong or not? The motion right now.
What kind of change with what the solicitor said? Go ahead. Go ahead.
You can't change it.
Go ahead, Larry.
Go ahead, Larry.
I understand the motion before us right now is to authorize the township president, I'm sorry, the board president and the township manager to make a recommendation to the board to cancel a work session and get votes of the board. Is that the motion?
No, I think the, my, my initial recommendation is that we leave it to their discretion, and I don't know whether I'd have to ask the solicitor as to whether that, I'm not sure whether that.
That's my question.
Have that discretion to do that. If the board authorizes them through a motion, to give them the discretion, would they have the discretion to make that judgment?
I think, I think the answer to that is yes. If the board gives the township manager just carte blanche instruction to call work sessions when they are needed, without needing an individual vote by all the members of the board each time, then I think, yes, that could happen.
Okay, that's my motion.
And how does that deal with advertising?
We'd have to advertise. You'd need to, you'd need to have 24 hours advertising.
Oh, say, of cancellation of a meeting?
No, for, for the scheduling of the meeting.
Oh, we're going to leave the schedule as it is. I'm just saying, discretion to cancel would be given to the president of the board in consultation with the township manager.
So you'd leave the meetings on?
Leave them on the schedule, yeah. We're going to, we're probably going to have, well, I'm not saying we're going to, we may, we may or may not have all of them.
But the discretion to cancel, it would just be at the, at the.
Discretion of the.
Discretion of the, of the manager without input from the board.
The manager and the president in consultation.
Right.
In consultation. We give them discretion to make that judgment.
I think as long as it's a work session, that would be all right.
Okay, I think there's a, the move in seconded, Chris.
I don't think, I think that for a regular meeting, you could not do that, but I think for a work session, you could do that.
Okay.
Who seconded it?
Steve did.
You only go seconded, okay.
I want to make sure I understand.
I just want to be sure that we're not.
Absolutely.
Get saddled with extra presentations at our formal meeting, it's going to be time-consuming for us and the public on the formal night, that all presentations by staff are still restricted to the work sessions, so that we have time to digest it in a week to evaluate and do our due diligence in order to vote properly the following week. I don't want to, I don't want to get a presentation on some real estate matter, subdivision or anything, and go over the ramifications of the planning commission for 25 minutes, and then have to vote that evening without being able to do due diligence and looking up what you need to do.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I agree with that, too.
But what?
So the motion.
None of that means anything. I mean, we're not, I mean, are we going to detail, I mean, are we going to detail where the manager and the president are going to exercise the discretion?
I, I trust their judgment, quite frankly. I think they can make that judgment.
It's great that you trust their judgment. I trust their judgment, too, but it's about satisfying, it's about satisfying the public, and it's about satisfying, and frankly, it's about satisfying the sunshine law. And unless the solicitor, unless our solicitor has already researched this, which I'd like to know, whether this question was raised to him already, and he's researched it already, and we're just hearing about it right now, I'd like a little more research done on this issue before this board takes a step and gives discretion to the president and to the, to the township manager that I don't think they have.
I don't, I don't think they have it either. I don't see how they have the authority to cancel meetings scheduled by this board.
If this board authorizes them, they have it, we'd have to authorize it, obviously. This board would have to authorize it. So if the board doesn't authorize it, then they wouldn't have the discretion.
The other, the other thing I want to bring up, we're talking about.
Are there work sessions in the rest of Pennsylvania, throughout Pennsylvania?
We never had work sessions, Larry, when we, this first started.
Yes, there are some in, in some towns, and in other towns, there are not.
Right, right, and in those towns where they have created them. Are you aware of situations where the township manager and the township, and the board president has the discretion to cancel it?
Yes.
And that's without notice to the public?
There's generally, there's generally notice published on, on tickler machines, or by robo-call, or messages on the door.
But I mean, not, not notice to comment, it's just notice, the, the meeting's canceled.
Right.
Is that what Springfield does?
Yes.
Springfield, okay.
Can I, can I bring up something about a change in a work session, too? Additional change? I'd like to see.
I think if we're going to have a work session about any issue, then why wouldn't we include the public's input? We've had people come to this work session that have issues, huge issues, obviously. I don't, I don't disagree that we've hadn't, haven't had huge, huge issues where the public's been here, Harvard Road's one, where we don't allow them to speak. And why not have their input? If we're going to have a work session, and we're going to be here, and you're talking about democracy, that's democracy in action. Have them speak. Have them come up here and hear the presentation, and give a comment if they'd like, if they would like to. That's democracy, to say, no, you can't speak, if we're going to have a work session, we're going to be here. It's the same thing with a special meeting. If you're going to hold a special meeting, and I've been to many, and we've called them, and we've been to them, have the public come up and speak. That's democracy.
I have no problem with that.
That's not a waste of time at all.
The president has the ability to run the agenda of the meeting.
Well, then, that's what I'm suggesting.
Be of public support, or probably give input, that's his prerogative.
But I also say, if we don't need it, we went through about 16 things like that, and it wasn't because of the work session last week. The only thing in front of us right now.
Can I just say, we, we've spent the better part of 20 minutes talking about eliminating a point of time whereby this board communicates with the public. You know, over the course of this past summer, someone, I, I gave a talk, and someone said to me, are there actually people who are against public information going to the residents of Haver Town? And, and that's what we've just spent 20 minutes arguing about, whether we can eliminate a time and a point whereby a week before a, a meeting where we will vote, information goes to the public. Whether you find that valuable or not, we should not be in the business of creating situations where there's less information going to the public, and that's what the work session holds. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so now, what's before us then, right now, is, it's, it's not to take away the work session.
But that's what it is. We're, we're voting, we have, we, we've spent the last 20 minutes acknowledging that in the past year, we don't have work sessions at certain point, and yet we still need a resolution to authorize somebody to eliminate work sessions. That's what we're doing.
That's, that's what's before us right now, is the eliminate, is to have the discretion of the work session canceled by the president of the board and the township manager.
Right, so we're spending the time to create a situation whereby we're authorizing someone to cancel a work session the week before a voting meeting, right? That's, that boiled down, that's what it is.
It's just consolidating the agenda is what it's doing. It's making things more efficient.
No, it's not.
It's not, it's not, it's not limiting public input at all, so to make that claim is ridiculous.
And can we add to that? We want the public input.
And I agree with Steve, we ought to have.
And I want to add to that, we want the public input.
But the public cannot see us debate this issue. The public only gets to speak before our meeting. They don't get to speak after our meeting, so they don't get to hear any of our debate about these issues. Nobody in the public would have gotten to hear about our debate.
Let them speak before and after, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that, too.
No problem.
Let them speak after, wait, after we, after we debate?
Sure.
And before we vote, let the public come up and speak again?
I, I have no problem with the public speaking as much as they want. There's nothing.
Okay. We're going to get what you asked for, Mr. Lewis. I got, I know 100 people like me who can talk for three days, okay?
Excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen, let's see, now, the purpose of the work session is so that five or more commissioners can come together, correct?
What's that?
Correct?
I'm sorry?
No, nobody was listening. The purpose of the work session, so that five or more commissioners can come together and discuss a matter, and in order for that to be done, it has to be done in the public, right?
Well, that's a consequence of it. The purpose of the work sessions was to, was to, was the public to see what we were thinking before we voted.
Right, but we can't discuss a matter that will ultimately end up in a vote, if there's five or more of us, without, without it being in a public session.
Exactly right. Nobody can engage, we cannot engage in debate with a majority of us with any advocacy or any position of trying to get a.
Right.
That's correct. So that's, this eliminates one of our public regularly scheduled opportunities to debate issues that matter to people in Haver Town.
I think as a practical matter there, Larry, it's, it's probably rarely going to happen, if ever, so, I mean, I just, I think there's going to be rarely.
It's rarely going to happen, not ever. Why don't we go with exactly what we've been doing?
I think.
Which is every time we haven't needed one of these, we've canceled it.
No, why don't we just go with what we're talking about? I mean, what's that?
Because I can't figure out what problem you guys are trying to cure. I don't know what 10-minute meetings you're talking about. I have a meeting today, right now, we have a pretty, we had a pretty short meeting until we started talking about this issue, and in this issue, every single ward was affected by parking, was affected by developments, was affected by the townships taking on property. We'd met Congressman Meem. Okay, this was an important meeting, and it was important for us last week to have this stuff, and for the public to know that this was coming up. It would be important for the people in Ridgway to know about parking. We wouldn't have postponed that vote if we hadn't had the debate we had last week.
But we would have had the meeting.
We'd have 30 people speak this week about Ridgway.
We would have had the meeting, so, I mean, I.
I know, but.
Clearly, we would have had a meeting.
But no, last week is exactly the meeting you guys wanted to use as the example of why we didn't need to have these meetings.
That's not the.
That's how it came up.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't, that wasn't.
No, it didn't.
That's not what we're saying.
Your characterization of it is way off.
Yeah.
You're the one in July or August would say, hey, let's not have a meeting, okay, do we need a work session? No. Half the time, I don't even remember us knowing what was on the agenda to cancel a work session. Oh, I'm saying, and if we do have a work session, here's what I want. If we're going to have a work session, I agree with Commissioner Lewis's last resolution, if we're going to have one, I would like the public, I didn't get an answer, whether or not the public can speak at that work session. I'm sure the public can speak at the work session.
Mr. Solicitor?
Public can speak at any meeting.
Well, then, that's what, we've stopped them.
Okay.
From speaking. We've said to them, you cannot speak, and that's been wrong.
And now, and now, Mr. DiMillo, because you think it's so important for the public to be able to speak anytime we meet, you're giving discretion to the township manager and the president to choose those times the public can speak on an issue and not speak on the issue.
We'll have a chance the following week to do the same thing.
What's that?
We'll have a chance to do the same thing the following week.
It's, no, they won't.
Yes, they will.
They do.
They can do it before, again, we can have it before and after, if you want.
So we're going to have debates after, we're going to have public comment after we debate before we vote?
I have no problem with public comment before or after the meeting.
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Fine, it doesn't matter.
We're not trying to stymie public input at all.
Obviously, nobody's convincing anybody of anything here.
Yeah, I would move, I would move the question, Mr. President.
Okay, so the resolution on the board. Mr. Lewis, if you would just put down exactly what the resolution is.
I would move that we keep the existing work sessions in place as the resolution states, states, but leave the discretion to the Township Manager and the Board President to determine whether a work session is necessary. If it is not, if it's not necessary, then the public would be duly notified, as would be the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Lewis, before I accept that, would you add that public comment?
Yes, and I would also, the public, public comment before and after, if there's, I'm fine with that as well.
Whoa, 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 whoa. This is a resolution about our work sessions. We are not changing our format of our regular sessions.
Well, I guess the President can make that decision himself. You can.
Solicitor, you just said, Mr. Solicitor, you said public comment at any time.
Are we talking about at the work sessions? This is, yeah.
Did you talk about work sessions?
Yeah, work sessions.
You wanna get into an argument of when the public can speak, we can have an argument another time.
Okay, let's leave that as a separation.
Listen about work sessions.
Leave it as a separation, yeah.
Don't add to this resolution anything about our voting sessions.
The purpose of.
Is the authority to the President and the Township Manager to cancel a work session?
Yeah, if, if, not necessarily.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to speak over you. The purpose of the work sessions was for a discussion among this Board, because by law, by the Sunshine Act and the Right to Know Law, the only time we must provide or allow public comment is whenever we're voting. So the original objective, I believe, through President Wexler, was that we could have a discussion, we could talk among the Board, we know, and then we could determine what we were gonna do, or where we were thinking, or what the issues were, or like last week. We can allow public comment, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that, and I have no problem with that. But we also had limited the meetings to an hour and a half because we thought that would be a sufficient amount of time. With regard to the proposal that is on the floor, I do not believe, and I have great respect for Mr. Gentili, that he has the authority under our Township Code or Charter to make any decisions about canceling the meetings. It's not given to him in that charter. And this is not personal to Mr. Gentili, it doesn't matter who's in that role. I don't believe we can delegate that role to him.
Yeah, but our Solicitor does.
With the President.
I disagree, I can disagree with the Solicitor. I don't believe that that's permissible.
I think I moved the question, so, I moved the question, so I think there's gonna be a vote on whether we should vote.
I just wanna make sure that the, it's, that it's correct before everybody takes, takes a vote, and then we're going in the back room again to discuss it. So.
I don't think this is an answer the Solicitor should be doing on the spot.
I don't either.
He can advise us, and we can take this vote, and let me tell you something, if the Solicitor tells me this doesn't violate the Sunshine Law, and we could do this stuff, I'll seriously consider voting for this resolution. But asking him to do this on the fly, this is some, this is why we, we like having Jim as our Solicitor, is because he doesn't answer questions on the fly, he does the analysis and he lets us know.
I don't think he says he has to on the fly if I'm wrong.
Tell us whether you need additional, to do additional research.
Jim, are you on the fly here? Are you comfortable with this?
Do you need additional research?
I can't even hear Richard, I'll say it.
Do you need to do additional research on this, or do you feel comfortable making a ruling from your?
I mean, it depends on, I'm very familiar with the Sunshine Law, I'm very familiar with the Right to Know Act.
Right.
Both laws are very complicated. If I can get to what the question is exactly, I could probably answer them one by one, but there may be some that I'll need help with.
Okay, so do you understand what we're talking about here, giving the discretion to the President of the Board and the Township Manager to decide whether we should have a work session?
Yes, and I think that's okay.
You think that's okay? You think, or you know?
I think.
Well, you wanna?
I think. I'm pretty sure.
Okay, then I think, then I, if you're not sure, then I think we, I agree with Mr. Holmes, that we should, we should hold off until you're sure.
I move retable.
Yeah, a second.
Second, take the roll. Can I, you have a table? I just wanna ask about the public comment, I still don't think I got an answer.
Take the roll.
Yes, the table.
Yes.
And who, who is second?
Andy Lewis.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, the table.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number sixteen, vehicle purchases, that's for Public Works, Mr. McGarrity?
Motion to authorize a purchase of the following vehicles. Highway Department, Atley Industries, one twenty sixteen model LRV dash sixty dash E seventy, seventy-five-foot bucket tree truck with dump body on international chassis. Under Co-Stars contract oh twenty-five oh ninety-one, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. For Hondre Fleet Sales, one twenty sixteen Ford F three fifty pickup service body with eight-point-five western snow plow. Under Co-Stars contract twenty-five dash oh oh six, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. One twenty-six Dodge Ram twenty-five-hundred pickup with western eight-point-five snow plow. Co-Stars contract twenty-five two oh one, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars. Sanitation, from Grand Truck, from Grand Truck Equipment Company, one twenty sixteen, twenty-yard rear loader refuge body. Under Co-Stars contract oh twenty-five oh forty-six, in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. From Hunter Sales, Hunter's Truck Sales, one twenty sixteen International seventy-four-hundred four-by-two cab and chassis for rear loader refuge body. Under Co-Stars contract twenty-five dash one oh two, in the amount of ninety-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Park maintenance from Hyundai Fleet Sales, one dash twenty sixteen Ford F three fifty pickup truck with western eight-point-five snow plow. Under Co-Stars contract twenty-five dash two oh one, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Police Department vehicles. Motion to authorize a purchase.
Now, wait, hold on, Jim, that's.
Let him go.
Huh?
Oh, that's the end of the vote. That's right, okay, I'm sorry.
That's, that's the end of that.
Okay.
Second.
Just gonna let him go. Why didn't you just let him?
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Lewis. Discussion?
Just a quick question, we're buying, in one department, we buy our Dodge Ram twenty-six pickup with the same, an eight-and-a-half-foot snow plow. In the other department, we're buying a Ford three fifty with the same plow, and they're a thousand dollars different. Why aren't we just buying the same trucks, or maintenance, and engine?
We're trying to try other Dodges, and we actually have a Dodge in our police department, and we're just trying a different vehicle. So Mr. Dockerty recommended that you get a Dodge. If you tally all these vehicles up, they're actually coming at ten thousand dollars, ten thousand, five hundred dollars under budget. So altogether, these were under budget.
So Highway Department's using Dodge and the park maintenance, which is using Ford?
Yes.
Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. D'Amelio, you gonna take this police department vehicle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to authorize the purpose of the following, following vehicles. A Hondre Fleet three fifty S Main Street Box sixty-eight Manhattan PA, one seven-five four-five, under Pennsylvania Co-Stars contract number thirteen dash zero-zero-three. Four two thousand sixteen Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles. One two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer unmarked vehicle, total purchase price of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. McGarrity. Discussion? Questions? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, item number seventeen. This is an appointment for the Historical Commission. This is filling a seat for an unexpired position.
Christine Cruises?
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christine Cruises to fill the unexpired four-year term on the Historical Commission to expire December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Oliva.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCloskey, and can you repeat that name?
Christine Cruises, I believe it's C-R-U-I-S-E-S.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
I would move we close nominations on the unexpired four-year term on the Historical Commission to expire December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio. Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Christine Cruises.
McCloskey?
Christine Cruises.
Christine.
Sorry.
We need to vote on closing nominations.
Yeah, it's.
So we can do by voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Now, I'll take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Christine Cruises.
Mr. Siegel?
Christine Cruises.
Mr. Lewis?
Christine Cruises.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, Ms. Cruises.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes, Ms. Cruises.
Uh, Mr. Wexler?
Yes, Ms. Cruises.
Mr. Oliva?
Christine Cruises.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, Ms. Cruises. Congratulations. And the, your office is gonna notify her, correct?
Is she here by chance?
No, she's not.
I do not believe she is, no.
But she, she did come very highly recommended by the other members of the Board, so she's very.
Yes, I would say the other members of the Board all expressed their interest in her joining the Board, and this would make a full, full capacity of the Board.
Thank you. Senior Citizen Advisory Board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to forego my, I'm having a ward meeting probably in March, I'm gonna see if I can get someone to be appointed then.
Mr. Holmes?
I'm going to reappoint Ann D'Antonio to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, and I'm going to reappoint Mrs. Martini, Donna Martini. Item number eighteen, continuation of the Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Does anybody wish to come up and speak?
John Ryan, five thirty-four Kathmer Road, Haverford, PA. Is it all right if I speak on a non-agenda? I mean, on an agenda item?
Sure.
I just kind of wanna reiterate what Don Kelly said, and what it seems like a minority of this Board says, but I don't think there should be any change to the work session meetings. I don't see any reason to change it, I don't see any reason to empower anybody in this Township to decide whether or not that meeting's gonna occur or not. I basically think that that was a lot of time discussing something that didn't need to be discussed for twelve meetings during the year, and to try to put in a piece of, you know, not saying that anybody would manipulate that power, but actually giving that power to somebody gives them the opportunity to do so. So I don't think that that would be a good maneuver for this Township. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. To answer that, I certainly would say that as President of the Board, I certainly would not manipulate that.
I'm sure you would, Chris.
I'm just saying, just.
But I'm just saying, you're not always gonna be the President. I trust you.
Sir, that is absolutely right.
If I were President, I'd manipulate the hell out of it.
But if I were King of the Forest, oh. Okay. New business? Does anybody have anything under new business? Other business? Mr. D'Amelio? Well, I, I lost my dog January twenty-second. And now, I understand, and he was a German Shepherd, and I understand what it's like for canine officers to lose a dog. He was an exceptional dog, and was very smart, you know, knew, I mean, I didn't have to train him much, he knew if I said go to mom, he knew it was my wife, and he knew my kids' names. And to put down an animal, you know, I've seen it, uh, canines, dogs, you know, the police officers losing them, and you never know until it happens to you. And it's, um, it's bad. So I just wanna say, I know what people go through. Thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. Mr. McCloskey?
Sure. Steve, I apologize for your loss. I'll try to be brief. You know, this, Dr. Levin talked about the Harvard Road site, and I know there's some people from Washington Lane in the audience, and this is the first time it's come up since I've been on the Board. And I know there was a DEP meeting recently that was very productive. And I also know there's limitations in terms of what the Township can do, but having been to that site, I think it is incumbent on us to do everything we can to aid the residents in securing the answers that they need from the state, and to stay on top of that. So I hope that just having one meeting is not the final step, and we continue to pursue additional answers from the state, from the DEP, and from any other agency that would be involved. On a lighter note, I would just note in the Third Ward, the Merwood Park Civic Association in the last month had the progressive dinner, where three households hosted over seventy-plus neighbors for drinks, for dinner, and dessert. And it was a great event, and they had a great turnout, and thank you to all the people who hosted, and to all the people that put a lot of work in to make it a reality.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. A couple of things. The Paddock Farms Civic Association is sort of regrouping as they do annually, and their meeting is this Wednesday at eight PM, and you can contact them, paddickfarms@gmail.com to verify the location. In addition, a couple other items. One, Commissioner McCloskey and I continuing the tradition that I've had of holding, of holding joint meetings with the Third Ward. We have scheduled a joint constituent meeting for Wednesday, April twentieth, at seven PM in this room. We have also received agreement that representatives, again, from the YMCA will be present to meet with residents, to discuss any issues or concerns, so we look forward to that meeting. And lastly, or two other things, actually. One, the Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness, we had some discussion earlier about some of the, during the, at the beginning of the meeting, it was mentioned. Their meeting has been rescheduled, it was snowed out last time, and will be on Monday, February twenty-second, at seven PM in the community room, which is downstairs in the library, which brings up the issue of snow, which we're supposed to get again. But I just wanna commend the Township, Mr. Gentili, and the entire staff, Mr. Dockerty and the staff, the, the work that the men did to clear those roads, you know, with roughly two feet of snow. They did a terrific job, it was a hard, a very difficult operation, and the roads in this Township were in far better shape than virtually anywhere, because I had to drive the next day, and you could really see the difference. And I drove through virtually every street in the Fourth Ward, and I can tell you that those streets were in remarkably good condition, and I'm sure they were everywhere else in the Township. And I received a large number of emails, many of which I forwarded to you, commending you and your staff, not only for the preparation, but the execution and operation to clear roads under, you know, a storm that was extraordinary, so thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And that's all I have.
Who was Jim of the audience?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanna, Mr. Kerr had mentioned this under the Citizens Forum, but I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Grace Cook and her family for granting us the easement on, on her property for, to expand our trail system. And Councilman McBlain had acknowledged last month that we have one of the best trail systems, if not the best trail systems, in the county, so I just wanna acknowledge and thank her. They've been great stewards of that land for a long period of time, and big, big contributors to our Township, so I just wanted to acknowledge, acknowledge her and thank her for her, her contribution, her family's contribution to this Township over the years. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. Next Wednesday, the seventeenth of February, I will have a constituent meeting at the Chestnut Walt School at seven o'clock. I've asked my civic associations to publish it as well, and asked Mr. Gentili to put it on the Township website. Hopefully, we will get a decent turnout. It's the same location where I've had all the Sixth Ward meetings in the last, since Chestnut Walt reopened. I had joked about whether that resolution, that snow emergency resolution was for tomorrow night as opposed to the previous storm. We are expecting some weather. If I could ask Mr. Gentili, do you need this Board to do anything before you deal with the next snow, or the way we do things is the way we need to do things?
No, we're, we're, we're fine. You talk about the snow declaration, emergency declaration?
Yeah, I just don't know if you need us to act now that we know something else is coming.
He has the discretion to do that.
Not for, not for a storm of this extent.
What's that?
He has the discretion to do that.
Oh, does he have the discretion to do that? Yeah, that's nice. Actually, I gave you that softball, all right?
Maybe the Board should get together and discuss every.
Hold a special meeting.
Yeah, hold a special meeting for the discussion.
Well, I was trying to avoid a special meeting by bringing it up now, in front of the public, instead of all of us just engaging in emails. And on one last serious note, Steve, I know that pain, I'm very, very sorry for you, and I, I, I wish you, that your warm memories of this dog will replace the sad memories you have now, so that's all I have.
Mr. McGarrett?
Okay, I got basically some, some good news from the stadium. Mr. Larry Yates and the group down there have informed me that they made $271,240 last year in the black. Number two, okay. Number two, Karen and Bill Penn, Bill Penn's the president of the Grange Estate, and they hosted a rotary, for the Rotary Club, Daraghans and Chaligans, they had a fundraiser at the Grange Estate, and I gotta say, it was well-run, and the Rotary made quite a bit of money, and it was well orchestrated, and a very, very good success. Number three...
Jim, you said Karen was Bill Penn's wife? Her na...
Karen Penn, right?
No, her name is, I'm sorry, her name is Lynn.
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 I apologize.
Okay.
Sorry, Lynn.
You're gonna get him in trouble.
Number three...
I just wanna, just wanna correct that.
Number three, I wanna, I wanna personally thank all the firemen from Havreford Township, because last week, they were over at, last Saturday night, at the Enunciation Church, for the young fellow who passed away, Frankie Carriola, who grew up a street from me, so it was very successful. I don't have the final totals in, but I can tell you, they, they did very well financially, and I wanna thank Andy Lewis and Bill Wexler, they attended, Chris Connell, I forgot to call him, because he had asked me to call him, and I, I was a little down in the weather, and I'm still down there, but anyway, that was all the firemen, men and women in Havreford Township. I gotta tell you, the place was packed, and they were there, and it was a total success. And finally, I'm just gonna go home, and I hope John Kaleysh can come in second tonight.
Mr. Wexler?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the Brookline Fire Company. I think after the award ceremony that we had last, a couple weeks ago, and then seeing what that brotherhood of fire companies do, I think John will be a little bit embarrassed, but he was back there slinging hash, serving everybody, it was a tribute. Everybody was in their Brookline Fire shirts, and they, they worked for a brother fireman and his family to help them on the path to recovery after an untimely death, so congratulations to Brookline for, for doing that for the family. And one other piece of compassion, it also relates to John's other department, and Steve will appreciate this. The other day on my street, there was an elderly gentleman in the middle of the street with his flashers on, and I had two people call me and say, "Bill, there's a guy down the street," you know, they knew it was a fireman EMT, "we think he might need some help." I walked down there, and he did need a little help, he was lost, it was about 5:30, it was getting dark, and he was from the quadrangle. He had been missing from the quadrangle since about 1:00. Why he has a car, I'm not really sure, but he did. He was out looking, going to the store, and he got a little disoriented, lost, and so I called the dispatcher. Turns out, a police officer had been looking for him for the last hour. He had been talking to the gentleman on his cellphone. Gentleman didn't know where he was, and people, they saw a police guy come up, and it was one of our larger policemen, looked, and after he left, we took care of the gentleman, a nurse from the quadrangle came, police officer moved his car to the side of the road, was very compassionate towards the 95-year-old gentleman, who was just a real class act, too, he was very talkative. But the comments from the street were, "Gosh, I didn't know our policeman were so nice." And, you know, it, you see, you see a police officer when you're getting a ticket, and you get pulled over with those lights on, you're nervous as heck, you can't even find, even, even in our positions, you get pulled over, and even if you know, you're still nervous when that light goes on and you're pulled over, but, but this officer demonstrated what our police department's about, professionalism and compassion for the gentleman. He also helped with the nurse. I was kind of impressed, he actually took the nurse's driver's license to make sure that he wasn't getting in the car with somebody that, you know, wasn't nice, so it was a real tribute to what our department is and serves us in Havertown. They're not, they're not big tough guys that give tickets or yell at people, they're throwing snow on the, on the street, but they also have a strong sense of compassion and duty to, to all our residents. So, John, pass that on to your department, both departments, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Oliva?
Yeah, I was able to, to get out, I know that Larry talked about the, the fines that we, that we give on, for snow removal, putting into the street, and 18 for the amount of, for the amount of residents that we have in the township is, is not a lot. So, my point is that during that snowstorm, we were, I was able to, and I, and Steve Sintebaldi had to put up with me all afternoon long, was out on the street with a snowplow, and we were trying to, they was trying, Steve was trying to push snow, and there was just too much snow. It was just pushing the truck back, no matter how much he tried to push that, you know, to open the roadway, and then people were cleaning off their cars, and there's nowhere for two feet of snow to go but back into the street. So, I wanna thank all the residents who were, you know, it was, it was a tough situation, especially in places where we have cars parked on both sides. People were very patient, and I got a lot of phone calls saying my street wasn't done, and I'm like, I, I was in the truck, and we did your street, there's a lot of snow being thrown onto the street, so people understood, and, and I wanna thank everybody for being, you know, the phone calls that I got, people were very understanding, and thanks to Public Works for doing such a great job. They worked 24 hours straight, and then they took a couple hours rest, and then went back out onto the street to plow snow, because it continued through the night, so again, thanks to Public Works for, for a great job. I also, again, Steve, very sorry about the dog, I was, I, I know Chase, I was, you know, he mauled me quite a few times at your, at your house, so he, he would smell my dog and then, and then knock me over and, and play with me, and so we, and I love big German Shepherds, so...
Thank you.
I'm so sorry about that. Steve, I know what you're going through, we went for the same thing, and, and so, all the best to you. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And in closing, thank you very much to all of our staff, and all of our departments,[1693.06]